Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, would you please listen to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Bishop Apostle Prince, founder and general overseer of charisma world international ministry to pray with us. Bishop, welcome to council.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, thank you very much for inviting me for such a wonderful meeting. I'm honored to be here. Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening, we give you glory for allowing us to come and sit on tables to discuss your city. We pray that you give us a wisdom to make decisions that will affect us in our generation and the generation yet unborn. We pray, oh God, for the United States of America. We pray for the state of Ohio. We pray for the president. We pray for the mayor. We pray for the governor of Columbus. We pray for the president on this council and all his cabinets and everyone involved in decision making in this city. We pray that, Lord, you will lead us not in our own mind, but with your wisdom. Like Solomon asked you, Lord, I need wisdom so that I can make good decisions to affect my time and my people. We pray for decision, not for our own, but the people of this city. Those that are born here, those that were not born here, those that are coming and the future of America. We pray that every plan of the enemy that will fight against decisions here, we come against it in the name of Jesus. Let your spirit lead us, not because we are leaders, but leaders that have the mindset of God, that we can make decisions and plans, even the people that are not even in this city, when they come, there's room for them to settle. Columbus will be the number one city in America. People will move from north, south, east, and west of the United States to come and settle here. And I pray that your plan for this city and this council will come to pass, not the plan of our own, but the plan that you have for us. The Bible says, "Your thoughts are not our thoughts and your plans are not our plans." We pray for, oh God, that your plan will reign in this city. And at the end of the day, when we have made good decisions and everyone in this city benefits from our decision, we will say, oh God, we thank you for how far you brought us. We glorify your name, that today will be a wonderful meeting that we have never even had before. Thank you, oh Lord, for allowing us and making the way for us, the things that we haven't even thought of. May your wisdom bring it unto us. The Bible says that if anyone asks of wisdom, he should ask of God, not the wisdom of this world, but the wisdom of God, so that we can make this city the best for us and the generations that are yet to move in this city. We give you glory and we honor you in Jesus' mighty name do we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much, Bishop. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to suspend the reading of the journal?
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal was approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and we published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications we ran into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now go around the dais for any resolutions or announcements by councilmembers, starting with Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
And for me this evening.
President Proton. Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember Favor.
One, very briefly. Good evening. We are currently accepting applications for the 2022-2023 Columbus Youth Council Program. Interested Columbus City School juniors and seniors can apply by visiting www.columbus.gov/cyc. Columbus Youth Council Program gives Columbus High School juniors and seniors an opportunity to immerse themselves in city government and learn how they can become better stewards in their community. Students selected will participate in several lessons dealing with topics such as the structure of city government, city development, what municipalities can and cannot do, and much more. This is a wonderful opportunity for students in the cohort will also take a trip, fingers crossed, to DC at the end of the program in 2023. The application closes on July 29th. For any additional questions or if you have any comments or concerns, please email my assistant, Anisa Liban, at A A L I B A N at columbus.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy. All right. Are there any comments for us to the auditor clerk's office, attorney's office? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance off the consent portion of the agenda, seeing them, and we now have a motion to waive readings of 30-day legislation by the clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance number of 30-day legislation?
Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 1277, 1824, 1830, 1831, 1834-2022. Technology Committee, ordinance 1775-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 112X-2022, ordinances 1784, 1930, 1958-2022. Finance Committee, ordinance is 1767, 1915, 2029-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee, Resolution 97X-2022, and ordinance 1329-2022. Public Utilities Committee, Resolution 141X-2022, and ordinances 1574, 1598, 1625, 1678, 1716, 1802, 1809, 1916, 1923-2022. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 1900-2022. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 1974, 2003, 1827, 1970, 2000, 2004-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't believe we have any speakers on the first reading. Will the clerk now read those ordinances on second reading and emergency?
Consent section, resolution of expression 140X-2022. Economic Development Committee, Resolution 111X-2022, 133X-2022. Ordinances 1801, 1806, 1807, 1817, 1836, 1867, 1835, 1838. Technology Committee, ordinance 1218, ordinance 1693, 1911, 1937-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 1575, 1663, 1689, 1741, 1794, 1796, 1925, 1928-2022. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee, ordinance 1606. Finance Committee, ordinance is 1710, 1721, 1722, 1754, 1769, 1818, 1844, 1858, 1865, 1894-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1324, 1325, 1332-2022. Education Committee, ordinance 1792-2022. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1487, 1586, 1600, 1624, 1717, 1752, 1753, 1762, 1799, 1859, 1899, 1934-2022. Housing Committee, ordinance is 1770, 1771, 1797, 1798, 1803, 1819, 1822, 1852, 1864, 1933, 1941, 1946-2022. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 1739, 1740, 1954-2022. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 1525, 1566, 1757, 1765, 1813, 1820, 1909, 1917-2022. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 1644, 1749, 1751-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Certainly. May I have a motion to remove ordinance 1698? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Ordinance is removed. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading the consent agenda. We have two speakers on the consent agenda. First speaker is Mr. Nate Wilkins, speaking on ordinance 1770.
1612, Arlington Avenue, Mr. Latane George Wilkins, speaking in favor of 1771, 2022. We talk about 50 units to be constructed in this, I believe it's the Mobie Homes LLC for $8,000. But before I, before I, to pass this, I want to suggest a certain amount of money of $8,075.89 for the case that's going on to McDowell Place. I don't know what that probably look like if it's vacant land, but we want to utilize that 50 units for low income. You know, it seem like there's not enough low-income, single mothers, single fathers, or something out there to subsidize this. So I would just like to know where this is going to be located, if it's going to be located somewhere around shopping centers, the bus line, the hospitals, where they can have more accessibility to doctor's office, healthcare facilities, and things and stuff like that. But again, I'd just like to see this somewhere in a dense area where people can shop, gather places, or something like that, not somewhere outside the city limits. Thank you for your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director, are you able to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, so the McKinley Manor is going to be located out on West Broad Street. Mr. Wilkins also mentioned McDowell Place, which is also McDowell Road, just west of the Scioto Peninsula project that's being developed.
Thank you, Director. We have one final speaker on the consent agenda, Mr. Joe Motil, speaking on ordinance 1801 in the Development Department. Mr. Motil, welcome back to council. Yes, sir.
Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road, Columbus, Ohio, President Harden, Proton Brown, members of city council. While I'm not completely against the use of $900,000 of ARP funds to pay for the convention centers upgrading of their ventilation system in order to protect visitors and employees from possible airborne transmission of viruses and pathogens, but what continues to dismay and irritate me is not that one dime of the $187 million of City of Columbus taxpayer ARP funds has been spent on providing not even one unit of affordable housing for an additional with housing, for an additional with, in addition with, for those of annual income of $35,000 or less. And not one dime of these ARP funds has been spent on affordable housing, period. Yet since March of 2020, in June of this year, 33,000 evictions were filed in Franklin County. 17,000 were filed in Columbus alone from March of 2020 to August of 2021. And we all know that the number of 54,000 individuals paying more than 50% of their incomes towards paying rent is far greater now than it was when that number was 54,000 and reported in 2017. And because the mayor was too short-sighted to calculate the need for a larger bond package for affordable housing in 2019, the 2019 $50 million Affordable Housing Bond Package that the mayor boasted about back then has been depleted since early this year. Therefore, the city has gone seven months without being able to assist low-income, nonprofit affordable housing developers with bond funds and will not be able to assist with any bond funds until next year, as long as the November 2022 Affordable Housing Bond Package passes. And all the while, the mayor and the city council continue to hoard about $135 million that remain of the taxpayers' ARP funds while depriving thousands of individuals the right to decent housing. And why hasn't the mayor or the city council chosen to get together with their Democratic Party Franklin County Commissioner colleagues on combining no less than $60 million each of taxpayer ARP funds towards affordable housing? The city of St. Paul, Minnesota, which is nearly half the population of Columbus, displayed its leadership by partnering with its county officials to combine a total of $74 million of their ARP funds to construct up to 1,000 units for those at 30% AMI in St. Paul. But here in Columbus, not a dime by the city or the county. And where is intel in the Columbus Partnership's investments into our affordable housing crisis? Individuals, families, and the homeless are suffering and can't wait for zoning changes, CRA set-aside reform in exchange for tax abatements, a November Affordable Housing Bond Package, and short-term solution grants and rental assistance. Allocating ARP funds for affordable housing is far from, quote, "advocating for progressive policies," but it is plain and simple logic. You have heard affordable housing advocates and others throughout the city pleading for these funds to be spent for affordable housing for over a year now. Waiting any longer is not an option. And Columbus citizens deserve an explanation tonight as to why not a dime of these funds have been allocated towards building affordable housing units. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Motil on this piece? Sena, thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing them, we have a motion for approval. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1575, 1698, 1721, 1757-2022, from which I am abstaining.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes, with the exception of 111X, 15, 16, 17, 69, 1770-2022, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Dorance.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Yes, with the exception of 1806, 1689, 1899-2022, for which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Remy. President Harden.
Yes. Ordinances passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day in table legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Economic Development Committee for second reading, we just have one resolution, 0108X-2022, to appoint a member to the Board of Trustees of the Jeffrey Park New Community Authority as required by Chapter 349 of the Ohio Revised Code and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for pass. I first move to remove Resolution 0108X-2022 off of the table by voice.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Mr. Dorance.
Yes.
Ms. Favor. Mr. Remy. President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you, Council President. May I move to the Small and Minority Business Committee?
Sure.
Thank you. Tonight in the Small and Minority Business Committee, we have ordinance 1825-2022 to authorize the appropriation of $15,000 within the Job Growth Subfund for the Small Business Training Service Program, to authorize and direct the Director of the Department of Human Resources to implement the Small Business Training Services Program and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is in partnership with, between council and our very own citywide training and development office within Department of Human Resources. It provides $15,000 in funding for the continuation of their Small Business Training Services Program. For those who are unfamiliar, the City Training and Development Office provides City of Columbus employees and the public a robust suite of innovative trainings that foster personal, professional, and organizational development. In an effort to be intentional and direct in our support of small businesses, the Small Business Training Program allows local small businesses free access to numerous classes offered by the City of Columbus Citywide Training and Development Office. Classes are designed to improve the professional skills of workers, and professional development sessions include courses focusing on both hard and soft skills. The courses provided by this program include, but are not limited to, computer courses in Microsoft Excel, Word, and PowerPoint, courses on marketing with social media, and courses on leadership and team building. The small business, small businesses who are interested in taking advantage of this great program can reach out to ctd@columbus.gov for more details. I want to take a second to thank Council President Harden and Councilmember Remy, Chair of our Administration Committee, for partnering with my office to fund the continuation of this great program. Hearing the success stories of so many of our small businesses that have gone through this critical training, whether it be around DE and I, like I said, Microsoft Office and so many others, has been great. So also want to acknowledge our Director of Human Resources, Director Nikki Brennan, for her leadership on this. Council President or Councilmember Remy, did you all have any comments that you wanted to add?
No, I guess I would just shout out one of our former colleagues who helped start this program a long time ago, Councilmember Tyson, and thank her for her leadership in getting us here.
Absolutely. And it's a great program to continue. So if there are no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have one ordinance today in public service and transportation. Ordinance 1812, 2022, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio State University Foundation in support of the Columbus Transportation Leadership Endowment Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 within the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, to authorize the return of any funds that may be unused and to declare an emergency. So women represent 13% of the engineering workforce, and Black and Brown people represent less than 10% of the engineering and overall STEM workforce. And while we see the numbers of Black, of women and Black and Brown students graduating with engineer or STEM degrees, less and less of them are entering the actual workforce every day. So with access and equity at the heart of this effort, the city of Columbus aims to advance the needs of historically underserved populations in the field of engineering. The contribution to this endowment will provide scholarships to undergraduate civil, environmento, and geodetic, if you know that, bonus points, engineering students. So scholarship recipients, the number of recipients, and the amount of each scholarship should be deter, or will be determined in accordance with the college, in consultation with the student, financial aid, and the college's Office of Diversity, Outreach, and Inclusion. So this is a very exciting opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Director Gallagher to not only talk about this endowment, but also what public service is doing to encourage more folks getting into the career of engineering. So Director Gallagher.
Thank you. Council President Harden, Council Chair Barosa de Padilla, we are really excited about this program. It's one of several that we have started. But this started with the city's first-ever Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan, and this was one of the tactic, tactics that we listed in there, was to figure out a way to get more minority students and engineering students, interested in engineering, but also interested in coming and doing public work once they got that degree, and just learning about the work that we do on a day-to-day basis, not only here at the City of Columbus, but in that government space. So we are doing $150,000, and what that will do is $100,000 will go into an endowment that will last in perpetuity and give three scholarships every year to three different students that are going into the engineering field. And we are hoping that that can go to students from neighborhoods in Columbus. That's what it will be aimed towards, but they can't force that to happen, but that will be the goal. And then the other 50,000 will go for five years, $10,000 a year, into a program called Preface, which at Ohio State, it's for students that are going into their first year in engineering just to learn about the different fields and have companies and people like Columbus, City of Columbus, come in and talk to them about the variety of things that engineers do on a day-to-day basis. We get to come in and talk to them, teach them about us, they get to learn from real engineers what we do during the summer before they start their engineering program. So that is what we're doing with Ohio State, and just so I don't continue to babble along because I'm really excited about these programs. We're also working with Wilberforce College. We're working with Columbus State on some other types of programs. We're working with, I think it's Central State? Does that sound right? Central State. So those are three that we're also working on, different types of programs, but not necessarily for engineers, but with some other programs that they have in place. And then we're also trying to set up some co-op programs with University of Cincinnati and University of Dayton because they already have those programs in place. So we're trying to reach out to different universities with different types of programs, see what sticks, what doesn't stick, what works the best, but really work with the universities of programs they already have in place, so we're not recreating the wheel. So happy to take any questions, but thank you for letting me share what we're doing this evening. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gallagher. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, one, really excited about this program, and it seems his intention is to encourage, you know, folks who are not participating now as much at a higher rate, women and young people of color, to not just be, go into the engineering field, but also to participate in public service once they graduate. Just wondering, because the entire field needs more women and people of color in it, are we able to, are we, is there a way to engage the private sector also to support these type of efforts as we, as we work towards our, hopefully, united goals?
Yep, absolutely. And Ohio State has private entities already involved in these programs. Actually, we will be one of the few public entities involved, but we will, once we get all the details worked out, we're going to do a press release with Ohio State, and I'm sure that they would be more than happy to kind of talk about some of the other companies that are already doing this. But yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And as a, the mother of a aspiring Latina engineer, I mean, she's only in sixth grade, but she has her life way more figured out than I ever did. I thank you, and I'm excited about this program. So with no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage by voice.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Mr. Dorance. Ms. Favor. Mr. Remy. President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Can I move on to Veterans and Senior Affairs?
Please.
Thank you. So I have two pieces, or two ordinances today. They are kind of twin ordinances, two sides to a program. So ordinance 1376, 2022, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to appropriate the amount of $1,008, no, $108,185,000 within the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the Recreation and Parks Department to provide home care and assisted living services to older adults in connection with a pre-administration screening system, providing options and resources today, or PASPORT program. It's a Medicare waiver program in central Ohio and to declare an emergency. Most older adults prefer to live independently in their homes, in their communities, surrounded by friends and family for as long as they can, but some need help. So the PASPORT Medicare waiver program helps Medicaid-eligible older adults get the long-term services and supports they need to stay in their homes and other community settings rather than enter nursing homes. So some of the services they includes personal care, chore services, emergency So some of the services they includes personal care, chore services, emergency response, medical equipment and supplies, social work counseling, medical transportation, out-of-home respite, and more. So this piece of legislation will authorize an appropriation of grant funds or the continued operation of the program into the next year. So this is the first part of this legislation for this program. So do there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Second. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston?
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa De Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Upstate.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. The second ordinance thirteen eighty-six twenty twenty-two to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with the agencies listed on the attachment heretofore for the provision of pre-administration screening system, providing options and resources today or passport, home care and assisted living services for older adults in central Ohio, and to authorize the expenditure of eighty-one million six hundred thousand dollars from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. So there are four hundred and ninety passport and assisted living agencies that provide services to older adults in accordance with the Ohio Department of Aging contract requirements. So the program, the Passport Program currently serves approximately eight thousand seven hundred individuals that are in the CO AAA area. So that's Columbus and surrounding area, and this funding will be allocated from July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-three. So this is actually the funds to administer the program itself and to give it to these four hundred and ninety agencies. So any questions or comments from my colleagues? Perfect. Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Second. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston?
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa De Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Upstate.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. That is all from me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by the President Pro Tem. President Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we are starting with ordinance zero zero eight-five X dash twenty twenty-two to adopt the twenty twenty-three tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. This is a yearly resolution passed by council. The filing of the tax budget with the Franklin, Fairfield, and Delaware County Budget Commissions allows Columbus to receive local government funds. These funds are monies collected by the state and shared with political subdivisions like Columbus via the counties. This tax budget will also establish the property tax rates for the city for calendar year twenty twenty-three. On June twenty-seventh, we tabled this resolution, and as in previous years, the second reading tonight will act as its public hearing. Auditor Kilgore, before I turn it over for comments or questions from my colleagues, would you have any comments to share on the twenty twenty-three tax budget?
Thank you, President Harden, President Pro Tem, Brown, members of council. You correctly summarized everything. This is a very standard part of the annual process, this tax budget, and I'd be delighted to take any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Auditor Kilgore. Seeing no further questions from my colleagues, this concludes the public hearing portion on this matter, and I move to remove the resolution from the table.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Removed.
I move for adoption of this resolution.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Removed or passed, adopted.
Thank you. The next two ordinances in finance both have to do with the city's spending plans for capital projects. Our plan takes two forms, our multi-year boilerplate plans called the Capital Improvements Program, and then a capital budget for the current year, which pulls from that plan. We're tabling both pieces on tonight's agenda to continue our public hearing series that's currently underway so that we can receive residents' feedback on priorities for their own neighborhoods. Last week, we held two hearings, one on the west side, one on the north side. I want to thank my colleagues for their participation in those hearings. We'll hold two more hearings this week, tomorrow at Family Missionary Baptist Church to cover the south side and downtown capital investments. That's from four to five-thirty. And then on Thursday at the Far East Community Center, covering the east side from five-thirty to seven. Comments can be submitted by filling out a speaker slip in person at any of the hearings. Advanced sign-up is not necessary. We have that there, and we take questions as department presentations proceed, so we encourage everyone to make themselves available to participate. Thursday's hearing will be chaired by our Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, Councilmember Nick Bangston. I also encourage residents to complete the twenty twenty-two capital investment input form. That's found on our Facebook page. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues before I move to the pieces of legislation? All right, ordinance zero one three four X dash twenty twenty-two to accept the Capital Improvements Program, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven, as described herein as the primary guide for future capital improvements budget ordinances and to declare an emergency. I move to table indefinitely.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Ordinance eighteen ninety-six dash twenty twenty-two to adopt a capital improvements budget for the twelve months ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, or until such a time as a new capital improvements budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for capital improvements requiring legislative authorization in twenty twenty-two, and to repeal ordinance number twenty-seven oh seven dash twenty twenty-one as amended and to declare an emergency. I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Next in finance, we have ordinance eighteen oh eight dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to expend funds to bind the city's insurance program for the term commencing August first twenty-two and terminating July thirty-first twenty-three, to authorize the expenditure of up to one million eighty-three thousand dollars and to declare an emergency. In twenty nineteen, the city entered into insurance brokerage and risk engineering services contract with USI Insurance Services LLC. Today's ordinance proposes the third of four renewals of the contract, which will keep the contract active until July thirty-first of next year. In order to fund the contract renewal, funds will be extracted from the Departments of Finance, Public Safety, Public Utilities, and Public Service. This ordinance also authorizes the Director of Finance to approve any necessary changes in the city's insurance program. Emergency action is requested to allow for uninterrupted insurance brokerage services and the immediate binding of property, boiler and machinery, general and excess liability, and aviation insurance coverage for the insurance year twenty-two to twenty-three to protect the city's assets. Do my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next in finance, we have ordinance eighteen thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the city auditor to execute a professional services contract with Midwest Presort Mailing Services in an amount up to one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for the purpose of providing printing, presorting, mailing, and relating, related services for the division in compliance with federal tax information safeguarding requirements as required in IRS Publication Ten Seventy-Five, to authorize an expenditure up to one hundred and sixty-one thousand from the general fund to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, Chapter Three Twenty-Nine, and to declare an emergency. The Income Tax Division has been working with Midwest for printing and mailing services for the last few years and needs more professional services. Due to Midwest's gained knowledge of division operations, their compliance in safeguarding tax information, and their success in printing and mailing services, the division is requesting to waive the request for proposal requirements outlined in code. This contract is for a period of one year, beginning September first, with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms, subject to annual approval and appropriation. Emergency action is requested to expedite authorization of this contract to facilitate and maintain uninterrupted services. Any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
May I move to Recreation and Parks Committee?
Please.
Thank you, Council President. In Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance fifteen ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-two to authorize and direct the city auditor to establish an auditor's certificate in the amount of one million dollars for the reimbursement of staff time related to the administration of Rec. and Parks twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two capital improvements projects, and to authorize the expenditure of one million dollars from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund. Generally accepted accounting principles require the capitalization of costs associated with the acquisition or construction, construction of property, which includes labor. The city's direct labor costs for employees who are working in the capacity of project manager or construction are eligible to be capitalized to an identified capital project. And for this reason, one million dollars will be established for the staff time billings in accordance with the auditor's internal labor capitalization policy. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have in my committees. President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee chaired by Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember LaFleur is yours.
Thank you, Council President. In Public Utilities, we have ordinance one six seven five dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend the Electric Power System Maintenance Service Contract with Robert Services Group, Inc. for the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Power, and to authorize the expenditure of one million three hundred thousand dollars in the Electricity Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is being submitted as emergency in order to repair a failed substation that supports the O'Shaughnessy Dam. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one seven six three dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of Department of Public Utilities to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with the Ohio State University for the Clinton Sewer District Number Three Trunk Sewer Shipton Upgrade Project for the Division of Sewage and Drainage and amend the twenty twenty-one capital improvement budget to authorize a transfer within expenditure of up to four million seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from the San General Obligation Bond Fund and declare an emergency. This project is necessary to support the OSU West Campus Mixed Development Project that incorporates approximately two hundred and ten acres of land at the intersection of Lane and Kenny. Emergency designations requested this time due to the project requiring work within the Olentangie River where seasonal variations in water levels limit the time in which construction can occur. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston?
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa De Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Upstate.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one eight five three dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of water meters and upperenses needed for the Division of Waters Enhanced Meter Project with various water meter vendors to authorize the appropriation transfer of thirty-three million from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of thirty-three million from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize amendment to the twenty twenty-one capital improvement budget. This will fund the purchase of water meters needed for the Division of Waters Enhanced Meter Project. The Division of Public Utilities has approximately three hundred thousand water meters and sixteen thousand electric meters that service more than one point two million residents in central Ohio. The Enhanced Meter Project will greatly reduce metering costs, allow for more frequent readings and billings, and provide data for analysis for unaccounted water and greatly enhance customer service capabilities. It's requested this ordinance be handled as emergency in order to meet the project's timeline due to supply chain issues. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one nine zero five dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Finance and Management Director to modify the contracts for the option to purchase distribution wire and cable with American Wire and Cable and consolidate Electrical Distributors, Inc. to waive provisions of competitive bidding and declare an emergency. This contract provides for wire and cable use and distribution of electricity within the city's service area. The modification is necessary to award additional items to vendors for which they were a second low bidder. The original vendor awarded these items is experiencing supply issues, and in order to have, have another source to obtain these goods, it is necessary to have these items awarded to two potential suppliers rather than just one. The Finance and Management Department respectfully requests this legislation to be considered as an emergency in order to obtain a sufficient stock of these vitally needed materials. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance one nine one four dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with SGI Matrix LLC for security system parts, installation, maintenance, monitoring, repair, and support services for various facilities of the Department of Public Utilities to waive competitive bidding for provisions of the city code and to authorize expenditure of thirty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars from the Electricity Operating Fund, the Water Operating Fund, and the Sewer System Operating Fund, and the Stormwater Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Utilities currently uses the Frontier Access Control System to secure many of its facilities. The contract provides for the parts, service, maintenance, and all-access controls products under the Frontier Security brand. Due to proprietary name with security software and compatibility of the existing security equipment, it's best interest of the city to waive the provisions of the Competitive Bidding Code. This ordinance is also being submitted as emergency because without emergency action, no less than thirty-seven days will be added to procurement cycle and will cause a disruption and delay of necessary security needs throughout the various facilities of the Department of Public Utilities. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
That is all I have in Public Utilities tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember LaFleur is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in housing, we have ordinance fifteen sixty-four dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a subaward agreement with Legal Aid Society of Columbus in an amount up to six hundred thousand dollars to provide housing stability services as defined by U.S. Treasury, to qualifying residents of the local community to ensure housing stability, to authorize the Director of Development to modify the terms and conditions of subaward agreement as needed without seeking further city council approval, to authorize payment of expenses starting January one, twenty twenty-one, to authorize the expenditure of up to six hundred thousand dollars from the Emergency Rental Assistance Two Funds and to declare an emergency. This legislation will provide Legal Aid Society of Columbus six hundred thousand dollars of federal emergency rental assistance two funds to continue to provide housing stability services for qualified residents. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance seventeen sixty-one dash twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a not-for-profit service agreement with the Legal Aid Society of Columbus in an amount up to nine hundred thousand dollars in support of the Tenant Advocacy Project, or TAP, to provide legal representation to residents facing an eviction, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within a neighborhood initiative sub-fund and to declare an emergency. Tonight, we are legislating one point five million dollars to Legal Aid Society of Columbus for enhanced legal representation as part of their tenant advocacy program at eviction court. Nationally, data shows that ninety percent of landlords have legal representation at eviction court, while fewer than ten percent of tenants have representation. Tenants with legal representation are much more likely to avoid an eviction judgment and keep possession of their homes than unrepresented tenants. In Columbus, when tenants are represented by TAP attorneys, only one point one percent of the cases result in a judgment against the tenant at a hearing compared to roughly sixty percent of non-TAP-involved cases. In addition to these primary effects, a right to counsel offers several secondary benefits to defendants who are sued for eviction. Attorneys may be able to keep eviction filings off tenants' records, arrange for alternative housing, negotiate reasonable amounts of time for tenants to move out, reduce or eliminate money owed to the landlord, or help tenants apply for rental assistance. With the COVID-19 pandemic continuing to cause financial insecurity for many residents of Columbus, eviction filings are rising, and the increase in eviction hearings will of Columbus, eviction filings are rising, and the increase in eviction hearings will continue into 2023. With these dollars, the Legal Aid Society of Columbus will be able to staff additional TAP attorneys and support staff for one year starting in the fall of 2022, and happy to announce that this is the official start of Housing for All 2.0. So we're incredibly excited about this legislation tonight. Are there any additional questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1821-2022 to amend the 2021 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Housing Preservation Fund, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a housing development agreement and a grant agreement in the amount of $2,250,000 with Easton Loop Apartments II LLC for Easton Place Homes Phase II Project, to authorize an expenditure of $2,250,000 from the Housing Preservation Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a housing development agreement and a grant agreement with Easton Loop Apartments. Easton Place Homes Phase II is a proposed 100-unit apartment development for families located at Easton Square Place and Charter Oak Way in Columbus, Ohio. The parcel will be split to create lots on which approximately 200 units of affordable housing will be developed in three phases. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1854-2022 to amend the 2021 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Development to modify a grant agreement in an amount up to $2,175,000 with Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority for the Sinclair Apartments Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,175,000 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of the Department of Development to modify a grant agreement with the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority. Sinclair Apartments is a public-private partnership between the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority and the NRP Group that will bring 180 high-quality affordable housing units to the City of Columbus. Are there any additional questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1855-2022 to amend the 2021 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Development to modify a grant agreement in an amount up to $3,325,000 with the Columbus Housing Partnership Incorporated for the Moby Place Apartments Project, to authorize an expenditure of up to $3,325,000 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Moby Place will be a mix of two- and three-story buildings that will include one- and two-bedroom senior apartments with community spaces, retail, and outdoor areas. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. As many of you know, we have been working very hard to finalize the updated Community Reinvestment Area Residential Tax Abatement Policy. The following ordinances are part of the Community Reinvestment Area's triannual reassessment update. Last December, we hosted a series of public hearings to hear community feedback, and I knew that we needed to push for deeper affordability. After more revisions last month, we again hosted a series of public hearings. However, I still believe there is a little bit more work to do on these, and our office is actively working with the Department of Development. I'd like to take this time to say thank you to each and every resident that has submitted feedback. We read every email, and thank you for your engagement and passion in this space thus far. With that being said, I will move to table all ordinances that lie under the updated CRA policy, starting with ordinance 1868-2022 to amend the AC-Humco Community Reinvestment Area to align with the recent changes contained in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes, and to amend the geographic boundaries of AC-Humco Community Reinvestment Area. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Ordnance 1869-2022 to amend the Cleveland Avenue Community Reinvestment Area to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 1870-2022 to amend the Far South Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 1871-2022 to amend the Far West Broad Community Reinvestment Area to align with recent changes contained in 4565 of the Columbus City Codes and to amend the geographic boundaries of the Far West Broad Community Reinvestment Area. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 1872-2022 to amend the Franklin Area G Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Ordnance 1873-2022 to amend the Grandview Crossing Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes and to set forth the circumstances under which combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 1874-2022 to amend the Northland Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes and set forth for the circumstances under which combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. I dare anyone to say that a million times. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 1875 to amend the Quarry Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of Columbus City Codes and to set forth the circumstances under which combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to toss this over to Council President Pro Tim Brown to read the next two ordinances.
Thank you so much, Chair Favor. The next ordinance is 1876-2022 to amend the Wyland Park University Area F Community Reinvestment Area to align with the recent changes contained in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to amend the geographic boundaries of the Wyland Park Community Reinvestment Area. I request to table indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa, De Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorance.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Abstain.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 1877-2022 to amend the Fifth by Northwest Community Reinvestment Area to align with the recent changes contained in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Codes and to amend the geographic boundaries of the Fifth by Northwest Community Reinvestment Area. I request to table indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa, De Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorance.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Abstain.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, table.
Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tim Brown. Next, we have ordinance 1878-2022 to amend the Kenyon Henderson Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to set forth circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1879-2022 to amend the Brookwood Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Yes. Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1880-2022 to amend the Milo Grogan Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Next, we have ordinance 1881-2022 to amend the Hilltop Area D Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1882-2022 to amend the North Central Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1883-2022 to amend the Far East Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA and to further clarify exemption requirements. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1884-2022 to amend the Short North Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1885-2022 to amend the South Side Area C Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code to amend the boundaries of the CRA and to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. President Pro Tim Brown, I will turn the table back over to you.
Thank you very much, Chair Favor. Next, we have ordinance 1886-2022 to amend the Near East Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. I move to table indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Burrosa, De Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorance.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Abstain.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, table.
Back to you, Chair Favor.
Thank you, President Pro Tim. Next, we have ordinance 1887-2022 to amend the Far East Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code, to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA and to further clarify exemption requirements. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1888-2022 to amend the Linden Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Next, we have ordinance 1889-2022 to amend the Northeast Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1890-2022 to amend the Southeast Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1891-2022 to amend the 161 Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
And last but certainly not least, we have ordinance 1892-2022 to amend the Livingston and James Community Reinvestment Area to make modifications to align with the updates located in Chapter 4565 of the Columbus City Code and to set forth the circumstances under which a combined parcel resulting from the combination of a parcel within the original CRA boundaries and parcels outside of the original CRA boundaries will be deemed to be within the CRA. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. Thank you. Council President, may I move on to criminal justice and judiciary?
Please.
We have ordinance twelve forty-four dash twenty-two to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Municipal Court to, clerk, excuse me, to establish a purchase order with TAB Products Company LLC for the purchase of case file folders for the Municipal Court Clerk's Office to waive the competitive provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of sixty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-one cents from the Municipal Court Clerk General Fund and to declare an emergency. The Municipal Court Clerk utilizes case file folders to store civil, criminal, traffic, and environmental court documents for the Municipal Court Clerk's Office. This legislation authorizes the Director of the Department of Finance and Management on behalf of Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk of Court to establish a purchase order with TAB Products, awaiting questions or comments by my colleagues. Seeing that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to Health and Human Services.
Sure.
Next, we have ordinance nine oh two dash twenty-two to authorize the Board of Health to enter into initial contracts with qualified vendors for the ending the HIV epidemic grant program for the provision of services allowable under the grant for persons with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio, to authorize the Board of Health to modify those contracts if portions of previously appropriated and encumbered funds are unused and reallocate unused funds by entering to contracts with newly identified and qualified vendors pursuant to federal requirements, to authorize the expenditure of four hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the costs thereof, to waive competitive bidding of City Code Chapter three twenty-nine and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health receives funding for the ending of the HIV epidemic grant program which focuses resources in jurisdictions with substantial HIV burden to implement strategies, interventions, approaches, and core medical and support services to receive new HIV infections. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into and if needed, modify contracts with AIDS Healthcare Foundation and Equitas Health to provide delivery of ending the HIV epidemic services, including but not limited to health education, risk reduction, rapid initiation of anterol viral therapy, and health insurance navigation to achieve viral suppression for individuals living with HIV. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. I need to go back to page seventeen. Ordnance sixteen ninety-eight dash twenty-two to authorize amendment of ordinance thirty twenty-six dash twenty twenty-one passed by City Council on December sixth, twenty twenty-two and the appropriation and expenditure of an additional two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Emergency Solutions Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Department of Development to authorize expenses beginning June first, twenty twenty-two and to declare an emergency. I would like to move this table, I would like to table this ordinance until July eighteenth. Or move to table to July eighteenth.
Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston?
Abstain.
Ms. Burrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is table.
I promise I'm almost done. May I move to rules and references?
Sure.
We have ordinance eighteen forty-three dash twenty-two to amend Chapter forty-five sixty-five of the Columbus City Codes to alter the affordable housing requirements applicable and market ready, ready for revitalization, and ready for opportunity community reinvestment areas and to incorporate certain administrative modifications. At this time, I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee coming before council is the Public Safety Committee chaired by Council Member Remy. Council member, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, ordinance fourteen fifty-seven, twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with the Research Foundation of the City University of New York on behalf of criminologist David Kennedy and the National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College to assist the city in serious violence prevention, to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with the National Network for Safe Communities to assist the city in a comprehensive group violence intervention strategy in Columbus. GBI focuses on the groups at highest risk for violent victimization and offending with the intention to keep those in them alive, safe, and out of prison. An experienced team of National Network for Safe Community staff will work directly with local stakeholders over a fourteen-month period to support the implementation of the group violence intervention in Columbus. This will include the following deliverables: conduct a one-day executive session on focused deterrence tailored to Columbus in twenty twenty-two, a group audit refresh, regular strategic advising, intensive strategic advising, peer exchange workshops, subject matter experts, access to national network working sessions, participation in one-hour weekly virtual workshops for support and outreach partners, participation in two-hour monthly virtual workshops for law enforcement agencies. This legislation seeks a waiver of the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code. National Network for Safe Communities, a project of John J. College, a criminal justice, is uniquely well-suited to serve as a consultant to Columbus's law enforcement and community partners and their implementation efforts. David Kennedy and the National Network is also the only entity that can offer access to scores of jurisdictions across the country that are implementing its violence intervention strategies, providing Columbus the opportunity to directly collaborate with and learn from peers doing this work. The city worked with this group in twenty twenty and again in twenty twenty-one. Deputy Director Gian Guerdella, could you speak to the waiving of competitive bidding and share any additional information you have?
Yes, President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council. First of all, I appreciate consideration this ordinance this evening. Chair Remy, you pretty much summed it up in that the Kennedy Group and the John J. Group at the University of New York has been instrumental in helping us to coordinate activities for our violence intervention program. They have been coordinating weekly meetings with our team, and as you know, we contracted with them a little under a year ago, and this continuation of those efforts, which we believe will be fruitful in reaching out to some of our most serious issues with respect to crime in the city. So I thank you for your consideration this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance sixteen fifty, twenty twenty-two to authorize an appropriation of two million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents from the unappropriated balance of the Law Enforcement Contravant Seizure Fund to the Division of Police to fund travel and training needs, software maintenance and licenses, maintenance services, and community education expenses for the Division of Police. This ordinance authorizes an appropriation of two million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents from the unappropriated balance of the federal and state law enforcement contravant seizure funds for the Division of Police. Funds were received from seized and forfeited property and are used solely for law enforcement purposes as specified in ordinance eighteen fifty eighty-five. These funds are needed to cover the cost of some of the Division of Police's travel and training needs, software maintenance upgrades and licenses, service renewals, maintenance contracts, furniture, and community education expenses. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Yes.
What does that mean, education?
Director, Deputy Director Gian Guerdella, could you provide an answer on the community education expenses, please?
President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council, I'm not sure I heard the question.
She was asking about the community education expenses?
So these are appropriation in the seizure fund. There's a variety of programs that police puts on at the academy to reach out to community to explain the type of activities the police does in outreach to the community, how they police in the community. In addition to that, there's a significant appropriation here for recruit materials as well that they will use to help recruit new candidates to the Division of Police.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Finally, I have ordinance nineteen ninety-seven, twenty twenty-two to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to enter into contract with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners and expend funds for use of the Franklin County Correction Centers for the housing of City of Columbus prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of two million dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Franklin County contracts with several local governments, including the City of Columbus, for housing of persons charged with municipal code violations. The contracts were established under the Ohio Revised Code, Section nineteen oh five thirty-five. The City of Columbus and Franklin County entered into contract CT one five seven seven seven. That charges a per diem amount for the housing of City of Columbus persons. This contract signed in nineteen ninety-four by the county commissioners and the city is amended periodically only for per diem increases. This year's per diem rate is ninety-six dollars per day, an increase of four dollars over last year. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have of public safety. With your permission, I move on to Environment Committee.
Please.
Finally, I have ordinance nineteen thirty-one, twenty twenty-two to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchasing agreement for automated side-loading refuse trucks for the Division of Refuge Collection with Columbus Truck and Equipment Center LLC, doing business as McMahon Truck Center of Columbus and Truck Country of Indiana, doing business as Stoops Freightliner, to authorize the expenditure of up to five million dollars from the Refuge General Fund for these trucks and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service Division of Refuge Collection uses side-loading refuse trucks and citywide residential trash pickup. The Department of Public Service and Fleet Management recognized the need to replace older trucks in its fleet beyond the useful service life of the vehicle. This purchase will replace ten refuse trucks that have reached the end of their useful service life, six MAC compressed natural gas powered automated side-loading refuse trucks, and four auto car compressed natural gas powered automated side-loading refuse trucks. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And finally, in rules and reference, I have ordinance eighteen twenty-three dash twenty two to amend various sections of Chapter three twenty-nine of the Columbus City Code to, in order to better implement policy recommendations from the twenty nineteen disparity study and to declare an emergency. This ordinance clarifies Chapter three twenty-nine of City Code, which covers process and procedures for city contracting. This section of code received a great deal of attention last year as the city moved from the disparity study into the increased diversity initiative. In order to streamline implementation and remove ambiguous language from the code, the Department of Finance worked with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, as well as the City Attorney's Office, to revise this section. Are there any questions or comments on ordinance eighteen twenty-three? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other business coming for our council? Seeing none, is there motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have three non-agenda speakers.
Regular meeting number 35 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the Journal?
Uh huh.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Seeing none, the Journal is approved. We will now go into the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs this committee and all members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin the zoning agenda tonight, just a bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk read the numbers of legislation in the zoning committee this evening that requires waiver of second reading?
Ordinance is 1800, 1814, 1815, 1840, 1856, 1863, 1902, 1804, 1829, 1832, 1833, 1860, 1862, 1895, and 1908-2022.
Thank you. I now move to waive second reading on those items.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit, President Harden.
Waived.
I... Thank you. So before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, allow me to briefly explain. Our current rules pertain to speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We'll only hear staff presentation for ordinances that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if we have a public speaker signed up to speak against the ordinance. We've received five public speakers' slips this evening and written testimony from five individuals that have been provided to each council office. All speakers on a council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, and applicants and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of an area commission and applicants are always able to speak on an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. On the advice of the city attorney, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer the pains or penalties of perjury? If so, please say I do.
Do.
Thank you. First, in the rezoning portion and amendments portion of our agenda tonight, we have rezoning 1800-2022 to rezone 5434 North Hamilton Road, being 1.55-plus acres located 360-plus feet east of North Hamilton Road and 800-plus feet north of Thompson Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Equity, Inc., care of Dave Perry, agent, proposed use is limited commercial. The city's department recommendation is approval. The development commission recommendation is approval, 6O. The Northland Community Council recommendation is approval, 1102. We do have two public speakers signed up to speak against this ordinance tonight, so this time I will ask for Planning Manager from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Shannon Pine, to make a staff presentation. Shannon, the floor is yours.
Yes. Good evening. The site is Zoned CPD Commercial Plan Development District as part of ordinance number 1947-2015-Z15-017, and will share vehicular access with properties to the immediate west, which front on North Hamilton Road. The proposed CPD district is to replace the registered site plan referenced with Z15-017, which shows this area to be developed with a single commercial building containing 13,400 square feet oriented parallel to the east property line. With this request, two buildings are proposed, with building one being 6,300 square feet parallel to the south property line and building two being 7,500 square feet oriented parallel to the east property line. The intended uses, office and preschool, are currently permitted by Z15-017. The CPD district proposes C4 commercial district uses, commits to a site plan, and includes development standards addressing setbacks, site access, landscaping, screening, and building materials. The text also includes code modifications for parking lot aisle and maneuvering. The site is within the planning area of the Northland Plan Volume 2, which recommends preserved district for this location. That is a district that calls for a mix of single and multi-unit residential development with some commercial uses. No specific land use guidelines applied to the site. Relevant commitments within the CPD plan and text are carried over from the existing CPD district, and the request also remains consistent with the development pattern along North Hamilton Road. Therefore, the city department's recommendation is for approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Pine? Seeing none, I'd ask for Representative the applicant, Dave Perry, to provide remarks. Evening, Mr. Perry. Floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, President Harden, Resoning Chair Dorance and all council members. My name is Dave Perry. I am the agent for applicant Equity, Inc. on this ordinance. In 2015, I handled the rezoning of 3.6 acres that included this 1.5 acres. The rezoning was to CPD. The Kroger fuel facility has been built. Bank of America has built an office building on the second parcel. Bank of America went through a comparable process with the city staff and development commission and this body to make minor changes to the site plan for construction of a two-story office building, which is now present at the site. This one and a half acres is the remaining acreage of the 2015 rezoning, and the proposal is as stated by staff. The uses are permitted. A 13,800-plus-or-minus-square-foot two-story building is proposed to be two, one-story building, one for medical office and one for daycare. The... All commitments made in 2015 are repeated in 2015. Flashing back a little bit, it was before the Hamilton Road widening that was done. It was before access... Specific access points were determined. The traffic staff asked that we provide access through the 3.6 acres to provide vehicular connections to the property to the north. The property to the north is the opponent speakers that you'll hear from, because it wasn't known where signals would occur at that point or whether the property to the north would get full-turning access or limited access or whatever. The property to the north is in Plain Township. It is Zoned commercial. It has a house that has had commercial uses in the garage for years. And... But regardless, we were asked to provide those potential vehicular connections to get to a signal that is to be built on the frontage of the Bank of America and Kroger fuel parcels of this property. All those commitments are repeated. This is a minor change to the site plan. The north setback is actually increased. And even when I wrote the development text for the 2015 ordinance, because there was some residential component of the property to the north, even though it's Zoned commercial in Plain Township, there were additional development standards exceeding code requirements established for the north setback. They are repeated and actually increased in this ordinance. The parking setback is deeper from the north. So this is... This is a... This ordinance has solely to do with minor changes to a site plan. Northland Community Council heard the points of the opponents and spoke or voted unanimously in support of the application as before you. So did the development commission and staff supports it. And if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or if you want more detail about what's happened since 2015, happy to provide that.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Perry? Seeing none, I would move to our first public speaker for the evening, Mr. Timothy Riedel. Mr. Riedel? When you get to the podium, if you wouldn't mind stating any relationship you have to the property in question here, and you have three minutes for public comment, sir.
Thank you. My name is Tim Riedel from the law firm of Bailey Cavalieri. I'm appearing today on behalf of Sarah Rastigar, the owner of the property to the north, as it was indicated, 5454 North Hamilton Road. The concern primarily today was raised by the applicant at a meeting before the North Community Council in February of this year, where he announced his stated intention of this rezoning is to deny and terminate Ms. Rastigar's direct access to Hamilton Road. This action, if it is carried out, will severely decrease the value of her property, including any future development. This is... The zoning of this property, the history of it dating back to 2015 bears this out, because the original zoning included a dual vehicular traffic on the far... Along the far eastern property line of the applicant's lot, including the south property line. That has now been eliminated. I think the current site plan calls for some kind of grassy knoll along those two property lines. It further, after a split of the properties, there was an additional access easement provided for in between the two lots that were split. And now this application overburdens that easement with elimination of maneuvering and the placement of a dumpster right into that easement. In addition, the bank to the west has a lane for access to its ATM machines. So it makes use of this middle access easement problematic. There is an additional access easement to the front of the property. The closer the access easement is to Hamilton Road, Ms. Rastigar believes that the more likely it is that her direct access to Hamilton Road will be terminated. And as I said, the history of this rezoning effort bears that out, that she is being forced to use the front access near Hamilton Road and will likely lose her direct access and the value of her property. We would suggest that the council table this ordinance to give the parties an opportunity to put terms or provision in the ordinance protecting Ms. Rastigar's direct access to Hamilton Road. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a second speaker slip for this ordinance in opposition. Do we have that individual here? Ms. Z. U. Ms. Rastigar? Yeah. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Rastigar. I own the property on 5454 North Hamilton Road. My property is not part of their CPD. I... This is a standalone property. It's a private property. I never agreed to have any easement into my property or from my property. This Mr. Perry, in the Northland Community Meeting on February 23rd, he told a roomful of people that I have... I'm going to lose my direct access to the road. I've been there for 27 years, folks. 27 years. This is the white hair I got because I've been there for 27 years. He told to a roomful of people that I have to go through his parking lot in order to get to the road. I am going to lose my access. Their application right now is in direct violation of the application that they filed back in 2015, Z15-017. It shows a cross-access way at the back of the property that's 600 feet away from Hamilton Road. They have eliminated that in their new application. Their other application in Z19063, it shows a cross-access in the middle of the property that's 300 feet away from North Hamilton Road. Currently, they're asking for code revisions, code variances, which would eliminate, practically eliminate, that cross-access. It basically forces the cross-access to the front of the property. This is just an insidious way that this applicant is trying to cut me off of a road that I've been traveling in and out for the last 27 years. I purchased this property, like I said, in 1995. It was in a dire shape. I fixed it up based on a single mother's salary. All these years, I've been trying to keep up this property. I bought this property not because the bank was loaning me the entire property value. I had to get a promissory note from the seller in order to purchase the property. I have shown that to the city, folks. They know that. These are facts I am describing to you all in here. I purchased the property because I wanted to have a business at this location. I immediately rezoned the property in Plain Township as a commercial entity. I ran a business out of this place for a long time, and right now, the property is leased to a bike shop. My entire property value, folks, you all know that, hinges on this access, direct access to the road. Now, this developer and their high friends in the high offices, they are trying to push me to go through their parking lot in order to access the road. That would devalue my property beyond belief. This property was supposed to be carrying me through my old ages. It was supposed to be... I was supposed to be able to pay my debts and move on. But right now, I am at the mercy of Mr. Perry and his client. I am respectfully asking for this council to see where I'm at at this point in time and help me out with this, save my access to the road that I've had for the last 27 years. It's not that I'm just there as a single, you know, as a residential place. I have operated the business from this location.
Thank you for your comments. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Bangston?
What was the address again that you?
5454 North Hamilton Road. I share a... Unfortunately, I share a property line with the applicant.
Got it.
This has been going on for so many years. There are so... Every time I come in here before any committee, I have to spend a lot of money. I am not here just because, you know, I'm trying to take your time. This is costing me a lot of money.
And this is in the township, correct?
And this is in the township, correct?
My property is in Plain Township, yes, sir.
Thank you.
But can I say something in here? One day, I'd like to develop my property. I'd like to sell it to somebody who can develop the property. I have to come to you annex to the city, and that's the time that you guys can get my access to the road. And I am requesting that I understand the process. I see the process. Help me out to save my access to this road.
I believe Councilmember Reamy had a question.
Yeah, Director Messer or Shannon, Ms. Pine, can you explain to me? I'm a little confused because I'm looking at it, and I see Bank of America, of course, is being built there. Is it because they're going to ask her to eliminate a curb cut on her property? I mean, why is there an issue here? I mean, I see right in front, she has access on Hamilton Road. What's happening here?
For the last 27 years, yes, sir. They are putting easement in their property, and they had three easements in their property, 600 feet away from Hamilton Road, then 300 feet away from Hamilton Road, then 40 feet away from Hamilton Road. They keep obstructing these accesses till you get to the 40 feet away from Hamilton Road. And Mr. Perry said that in the Northland Community Meeting, that the city of Columbus is going to take my access to Hamilton Road, and I have to drive through his parking lot in order to get to the road. I don't even have a dedicated access. I have to go through the back of the cars that are parked in his parking lot to get to the road.
Thank you, Ms. Rastagar. I want to direct that question from Councilmember Reamy to staff, please.
Sorry. And I will let Dan Blechschmidt piggyback off of my response, but this rezoning is not taking away anybody's access point. The access easement is in place for the time that this property becomes annexed into the city of Columbus and redevelops. At that point in time during the zoning process, that might be where the Division of Traffic Management would require shared access. And I will now turn it over to Mr. Blechschmidt to further explain.
Yes, and Councilmembers, just to elaborate, the city of Columbus has no means to restrict access to an existing property where there's no changes being proposed. That is, the Department of Public Service will not be closing any access points to the property at 5454 North Hamilton Road unless there's a significant redevelopment of the property that may require access changes. So per our typical procedures, when a property redevelops, the access to a site is reevaluated. So the access easement that was requested initially and was placed in the zoning text, and there are existing access easements for the subject property that is seeking rezoning, that is to provide a benefit to whatever future property owner is there to the north to be able to access the traffic signal and to provide better ingress and egress to a potential redevelopment of the property. But to reiterate, we are not removing any access to Hamilton Road for the property to the north.
Thank you, Mr. Blechschmidt. Councilmember Burrosa De Padilla?
I'm a visual learner, so when I'm looking at this, I mean, I have it pulled up so we can see from Google Maps on here. So there is access into a parking lot that's in front of the building that is not being taken away.
Councilmember, can you direct your question to either staff or the public speaker?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm directing the question to the staff. There, sorry, there is an access point in front, and there's a parking lot in front, so we're saying that would not be taken away?
I'm sorry, the parking lot in front, are you?
Yes.
I'm not understanding the question.
From what we're looking at, the access point, this is Hamilton Road in the front of the business, correct?
That's showing the site, and you're talking about her home.
Yes, I'm talking about her business.
Yeah. So this slide is outlining the site. What Councilmember Burrosa De Padilla is talking about is we all have her home pulled up on Google Maps, and there is like a driveway parking lot right in front of her home.
I have a picture in here if I may show this.
So I don't understand how that's interacting with the site.
Right. That's the question that I'm asking. If the access point in front, this is Hamilton Road, her address, so I'm just trying to understand what access point would not be, what is in question visually is what I'm asking, because it looks like there is a direct access point right in front of her business, and I'm not understanding how that would be not accessible anymore.
Correct. That nothing is changing. Nothing will be changing for her property with that access and parking lot.
Okay. So if I may say something, Dan is referring that nothing is changing right now.
Ma'am, I'm going to stop you there. I'm going to ask if any other members have questions for you at this point. I'm going to give you a minute to conclude before I allow members to ask additional questions of staff and then let the applicant come back. So if you have anything additionally, I'd like you to conclude at this point.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This is the access I have right now to Hamilton Road. What they're saying, what Dan is saying, is that in the future, when I want to develop my property, that is my hope and dreams, folks, I have had it for 27 years, I'm hoping one day I can develop this property, that they would close me off this road. They would close off my commercial access to the road, and they would have me to go through Mr. Perry's parking lot in order to get to the traffic signal. I don't want the traffic signal. That is not mine. I want to keep my access to this road when I develop my property, folks. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sorry, may I ask, so you're saying that it does not sound like your home, right? It's your home?
It's a home and business, ma'am.
Right. Hold on one moment, I need to get to my question.
I'm so sorry.
So you have a driveway with parking area and your home, and what you are talking about is if in the future you decide to develop your home into a commercial use, you don't want to have to close the current access point that you have. That's what you're worried about. You're not worried about right now someone coming in and closing off the access to your home. Am I hearing you correctly?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, my hope and dream is to develop this property one day and be able to access to the road. If they close that access, the property value takes a nosedive, I don't have to tell you that, folks, you already know that. This is my fear. This is my nightmare. This is my nightmare.
Thank you, Ms.
I have bought this house when it was in a dire shape. As a single mother, I kept this, I fixed it, and I apologize. This is so emotional for me, I'm sorry.
Certainly understand. It's very emotional when your property is tied up in something. I don't believe any other council members have questions for you, so thank you for your testimony this evening. I'd ask for you to sit down at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the applicant at this point? For the applicant and for staff?
I want to know, where are you guys entering? Are you going along between Bank of America and Kroger?
Mr. Perry, would you come to the podium?
Is that the access point for the property at this time? I just want to make sure I'm clear as I'm looking at it.
Sure, thank you. The only access to the 3.6 acres, which includes Kroger, Bank of America, and the equity proposal, is the driveway alignment with Hamilton Road that is to be signalized. The three property owners are paying the full cost of the signalization, and it is aligned with the Blendon Place condominiums on the west side of Hamilton. There is no other access to the site. Let me add, there's obviously some confusion about this. The 2015 access easements, and both of them are on the Bank of America parcel, the 2015 access easements were requested by traffic staff, by Dan Blechschmidt, to provide an alternative to accessing the signal. They are recorded, they are in place, they are there whenever whoever develops the property to the north chooses to access this property, but they were not, they're not intended to displace her access, nor did I ever say that. But it's a fact of development work that when a property goes through a major redevelopment, the traffic staff looks at access. And so this is really a safeguard that upon annexation, upon a development proposal, if the city says we need to, your access becomes right in, right out, for example. And I don't know that that's the case, that will be done by traffic study when her development proposal comes in. But what Dan Blechschmidt had me put in the 2015 ordinance is a protection for her. It's not a detriment to her. It provides an alternative means of access.
Any other questions for Mr. Perry? Thank you. So I just want to be very clear with staff here. What we have before us tonight is a change of the site plan. The concerns of the public speakers would come to fruition when and if additional development were to happen that would trigger, considering whether or not those changes would need to be made to Hamilton Road. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes.
So what we're voting on here tonight is not cutting off that access. Again, if in fact additional development occurred down the line, that would be something that would go through the city at that point because of those other events, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from councilmembers?
Just clarifying, the additional development going on would be at the initiation of the homeowner turning that property to something commercial. Not like additional development by other parcel owners around. It would be that the owner of the home initiating a new commercial development on that home property. That's the only way that that access point would be reexamined by Public Service to recommend some other traffic flow.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? So, and again, I appreciate the staff sort of walking us through this, because the concerns of the applicant, which I understand, this is an emotional case when you've invested so much in a property and a business, that's ultimately not what is in front of us with this piece of legislation. That is something that could happen down the line, again, at their initiation of a rezoning or variance for them. Because of that, that is not what we have in front of us at this moment. I move for passage at this time.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have rezoning 1841-2022 to rezone 9190 Antries Avenue, being 2.42-plus acres located on the west side of Antries Avenue, 280-plus feet north of Gemini Place from LC4 Limited Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan District. The applicant is Mumu Carwash, care of Dave Perry Agent. Proposed use is a car wash facility. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Development Commission's Recommendation is approval, 501. The Northland Community Coalition's Recommendation is approval, 80. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 1815-2022 to rezone 3301 Morris Road, being 1.41-plus acres located the southeast corner of Morris Road and Dunbridge Street from AR12 Apartment Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Stringer Holdings LLC, care of Dave Perry Agent. Proposed use is a commercial development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Development Commission's Recommendation is approval, 60. The Northeast Area Commission Recommendation is 80. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have rezoning 1840-2022 to rezone 452 Six Agenda Road, being 12.73-plus acres located east side of Agenda Road, 600-plus feet north of Wright Road, from R. Rural District to LAR12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Rocky Point Partners, care of Dave Perry Agent. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. City Department's Recommendation is approval. Development Commission's Recommendation is approval, 60. The Greater Southeast Area Commission's Recommendation is approval, and it was unanimous. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have rezoning 1856-2022 to rezone 1380 West Mountain Street, being 1.2-plus acres located in the northwest corner of West Mountain Street and Borough Avenue, from C4 Commercial District and Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Mumu Carwash, care of Dave Perry Agent. Proposed use is a car wash. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Development Commission Recommendation is approval, 60. The Franklin Area Commission's Recommendation is approval, and it was unanimous. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 1863-2022 to rezone 6841 Rock Hill Court, being 0.81-plus acres located on the west side of Rock Hill Court, 150-plus feet south of West Rock Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Christopher Jolly, Darian Ranker Architects. The proposed use is a limited commercial development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. The Development Commission Recommendation is approval, 60. The Northland Community Council's Recommendation is 150. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1902-2022 to rezone 5141 Embright Road, being 15.99-plus acres located on the west side of Embright Road, 890-plus feet north of US33, from R. Rural District to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is JBM Development LLC, care of Dave Hodge Attorney. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission's Recommendation is approval. The Greater Southeast Area Commission Recommendation is approval, and it was unanimous. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 1495-2022 to rezone 6201 Winchester Pike, being 42.2-plus acres located 400-plus feet west of southwest corner of Winchester Pike and Agenda Road, from LC4 Limited Commercial District, LM2 Limited Manufacturing District, and CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LM2 Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is WX2 Ventures LLC, care of David Hodge Attorney. Proposed use is an industrial development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission's Recommendation is approval, 60. And Greater Southeast Area Commission Recommendation is approval, 60. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Amended.
Next, I move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Amended.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reamy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0289-2022 to rezone 142 West Whittier Street, being 16.54-plus acres located on the north side of West Whittier Street, 350-plus feet west of South Front Street, from M. Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Zimmer Development Company LLC, Jeff Brown Attorney. Proposed use is a mixed-use development. City's Department of Recommendation is approval. Development Commission Recommendation is approval, 40. The Brewery District Commission's Recommendation is approval, 60. We have three speakers signed up to speak on this rezoning ordinance, so we'll begin with Ms. Shannon Pine from the Department of Building and Zoning Services for a staff presentation.
The site consists of eight undeveloped parcels zoned in the M. Manufacturing District. The requested CPD Commercial Plan Development District will permit a mixed-use development with a height district of 200 feet. The CPD text includes appropriate use restrictions and supplemental development standards that address traffic access, traffic improvements, pedestrian connections, percentage of affordable units, and street trees, with code modifications to permit parking spaces to cross parcel lines, to not require parking for outdoor dining space, and to permit required parking to be located on a different parcel than the uses that they serve. The access has been revised and is now via Mayor Place and West Whittier Street. If there is any access or easements proposed through the adjacent Metro Parks property, those would be subject to review and approval by the Metro Parks Board. A concurrent council variance has been filed to permit ground-floor residential uses and a reduction in the minimum number of required parking spaces for the apartment units to 1.3 spaces per unit from 1.5 spaces per unit. The requested CPD district will permit a mixed-use development that is consistent with the Brewery District's plans guidelines encouraging housing as a permitted use on the Whittier Street Peninsula. The development standards and code modifications included in the text, and as demonstrated on the site plan, are consistent with similar infill developments in urban neighborhoods. Staff defers to the Brewery District Commission's decision on final design-related matters. The city department's recommendation is for approval, and I'm happy to. The city department's recommendation is for approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Before we move on to our speakers, I just have a couple of questions for the department to sort of center the discussion a little bit. This is not within a community reinvestment area, correct? So meaning that this project would not be eligible for a tax abatement under current law. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, no, it is not.
Thank you. Next, could you talk about that Brewery District Commission approval? What does that mean for folks that may not be familiar with what that means when you have to build to the development standards of that commission?
So the Brewery District review of this proposal is twofold. They first make a recommendation on the rezoning itself and the plan that's adopted with this rezoning ordinance. The second phase of that development review would be when they are actually going to be filing for building permits. The Brewery District Commission would issue a certificate of appropriateness on the building design, and those plans would have to be stamped, and a certificate of appropriateness would be issued before building permits could be issued by the Department of Building and Zoning Services.
Thank you. And going back to that recommendation from the Brewery District Commission, so one of the things that we've talked a lot about this, this application, going back to the 1992 Brewery District Plan, calling for mixed-use residential in this area. So, you know, while everyone sees what this area looks like today, right next to a park, that plan calls specifically out, you know, mixed-use residential being part of this area at some point. Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for staff before we get to speakers? Last one. If there are changes that are made from this point, so there's obviously a site plan, there's various things that the applicant needs to comply with moving forward, if they're not able to meet those standards from the city, whether it's, you know, stormwater or others, what happens to this project?
After the rezoning is approved, it will have to go through a site engineering review, and if there's anything that occurs during the site engineering review that the applicant can't comply with, that alters this CPD plan significantly, then it would have to come back to be amended.
So ultimately, they would not get their permits, they could not move forward with what's before us today.
That is correct.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask for a presentation by the applicant, care of Jeff Brown Attorney. Mr. Brown? The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, President Harden, zoning chair, Dorance, council members. My name is Jeffrey L. Brown. I'm here on behalf of Zimmer Development Company to present this case. Landon Zimmer is here tonight, if you have any questions about the development or his company, as well as our architect and our traffic engineer. About three years ago, Landon got us involved and created a Columbus-based development team. We have MBBJ doing the architecture, Osborne Engineering doing our engineering, and Smart Services is our traffic consultant. At the very early stages of the zoning process, we engaged with Tim Maloney and his staff because they are really our only neighbor. We are a piece of property between railroad tracks and the park. We listened to Tim and his staff. The site plan that you have now is not where we started. The square footage has been reduced, the large, tall office tower has been eliminated, and the number of residential units has been reduced. We met with the zoning and planning staff, we had several meetings with the Brewery District Area Commission, and what you're seeing tonight is the culmination of all those discussions and negotiations. What we are proposing, Tim, if you could just show the site plan. What we are proposing is three residential buildings, five stories of residential, two stories of parking that goes with it. You see the open space, you see the paths that are all part of our development. This project got unanimous approval from the Brewery District Area Commission, it got unanimous approval by the Development Commission. We have not had a single person show up in opposition at our zoning meetings. Traffic seems to be the key ingredient in terms of the discussions. Very early, we sat with Tim and said, there's got to be a better answer than using Mayor Place. Mayor Place is a street that goes through the park, they have parking on each side, it accesses our piece, which is owned by CSX, and it also accesses the warehouse development that's owned by the Bischoff Associates. So we said, there's got to be a better answer. We shared with him and his staff at least six different options, either using the service entrance driveway or coming around the dog park that got relocated from the north end of the property to the south end, where we had always talked about trying to get a shared Metro Parks rejected all of those options. So we were left with, how do we solve the problem if we can't work something out? So our engineers came up with the solution. We have a right-in coming off of Whittier. It's a one-way street that's going north into our property, and then we would have two-way traffic coming out on Mayor Place. That is the only options that we have if Tim won't work with us. It's not the best solution, but it's the one that we have when we have to go alone. We did the normal things that you would expect with this development, which was a traffic study. We prepared that, the city reviewed it, accepted it. The one traffic improvement that they asked us to do was a contribution of over $368,000 to a road intersectional improvement upgrade at Whittier and Front. When we ended up with our own solution to access to the property, the city staff asked us to update our studies. We did that again, and we can move forward. The level of service at the intersection of Whittier and Mayor Place, the level of service at our driveway and Mayor Place are level B or better. And when you're talking traffic B is a really good grade to get. When we sat down and tried to figure out what other things that we could do to improve this project, my client agreed to do a $1 million contribution to the construction of a pedestrian bridge. That's one of the things that had been talked about in the past. How can we connect the Brewery District on the east side of the railroad tracks with what's going on on the west side? So the zoning amendment that has been submitted to the clerk includes that. It calls for a $1 million contribution to that bridge or other improvements that would be beneficial to the park or the community in that area. That's a decision to be made by the city and Zimmer. We also agreed to put 10% of our units at 80% AMI. Now, this is a little bit unusual because you see it in the zoning text, and the reason it's in the zoning text is we're not in a CRA. So we are not getting anything back for the 10% that we're setting aside, but it's the right thing to do. More housing, more affordable housing in the city is very important. When you look at this overall site, if you'd go, keep going, that shows the pathways, our green space, a connection to the north, a connection to the south. One of the things that the users of the park called for when they did their last master plan were more trails, more connections. This project provides this. Go ahead. The benefits, I won't go through the whole list, but let me just highlight some of these items. You're taking a site that's dirty. It's a, it's a current CSX railroad facility, and heaven knows what's gone on there. We got to clean that site up to the highest OEPAs standards because we were proposing residential. That has to be a benefit for all the surrounding property owners. We created an easement. We got two railroads to work together. Anybody who's tried to deal with the railroads would understand the amazing feat that was. We created an access for ODIP so that they can bring their construction traffic, not through the park, not through Mayor Place, but to come across two different railroad tracks as part of the 7071 construction. Trail connections, more green space, and when you think about it, what better use could you have next to an urban park but residential? This is a good project. The people that would review this and everything, your zoning staff, your planning staff, Area Commission, Development Commission, all say yes to this development, and I hope you do tonight. And Mr. Zimmer is available for any questions, our architect, traffic consultant. If you want to ask them anything, they are coming here tonight to be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do my colleagues have any questions for Jeff at this point?
What, Jeff? I'm sorry. Please. Just really quickly, I'm sorry if I didn't write this detail down. How far back on Mayor Place is the access point?
If you could go to the aerial. If you see that white and gray box, that is the warehouse building, and so south of that building where it would be our access to Mayor Place.
Got it.
Because there are two properties that are not government-owned in that peninsula. One is the warehouse building, and one is the ground that's owned by CSX.
Okay. Thank you, that has helped.
Mr. Brown, so what, we're going to talk a lot about traffic tonight, I know. When you say Mayor Place was not the preferred route for you all from the start, as you mentioned, there's been six different proposals that you all have mentioned. Just talk about, you know, from your perspective, why Mayor Place originally didn't make sense for, for the applicant and, you know...
Well, I'm a park user. We've been on that trail. Parking my building at Broad and Front, walk along the pathway, go see that. It's a wonderful park. Now, when they developed it, they put a street right through the park and have parking on either side, so there's a little bit of a conflict. You know, my idea, and it's kind of dangerous when attorneys start doing planning, but I think the planners would agree, if you could take your traffic off of Whittier Street as quick as possible, that would be a benefit. If you could reduce the number of people that are going through the park, that would be a benefit. And so from day one, we tried to figure out a solution and presented many different options. We actually did two onsite visits because, you know, sometimes the paper doesn't show anything. We went out and we actually staked the route that we were looking at, and we sat there with Tim and his staff and said, can this work? Can we move this? Everything that we suggested to them, we were going to do at our expense. And if the city says we need to make improvements to the Mayor Place, our, my client is paying for that. If we needed, if the parks would have cooperated, we would have had to move a part of the dog park that got relocated there. Again, we said all that would be at our expense. So if you look at that, when you come off of Whittier, once you cross the bridge, the parks have a service entrance there where they have their service buildings. When we originally started, they had open space to the east and their service buildings to the west. By the time we got into this, the dog park moved from the north end to the south end. So now we had to deal with, with the dog park. We figured out a way to do that. We needed an easement, I think of like 6,500 and some square feet. That's all we needed. To come in at a reasonable location, make it two-way traffic, but, I mean, we couldn't work it out. I hope if this goes forward, we will, we are still here to continue the conversation and try to work out something better. But my client was left with the situation is, what can I do on the public streets or where I have my own property that has access? And so what we have is, is what we can do with our ground.
And to underline that point, so if this were to move forward, your client would still be continuing to be open to working with Metro Parks on an alternative...
Absolutely. As Ms. Pine's pointed out, the, when you're in an architectural review district, it's a two-part process. If you have a zoning issue, they make a recommendation, and then you have to come back, and you need to get your site plan and your building approved, your lighting, your landscaping, your signage. So there's another whole process that we have to go through, and yes, we will. If you want to hear it from, I mean, I can have Mr. Zimmer come up here and say that he would be happy to continue the conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions for council members at this point? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
The first public speaker we have this evening is Mr. Nicholas Darby. Mr. Darby, welcome to council. Please state any relationship you have with the property, and you have three minutes for public comment. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. In 2021, I received a job offer from PATH Robotics. It's in that white warehouse building that you can see in the picture. I was very excited about this job offer. I said it would be great to live right there, be able to walk to work, have everything connected, be near all the amenities, be 1,000 feet away from a Kroger, be next to the Metro Park, have access to all of the High Street amenities. And I was, I was very excited when I looked online, I saw that this development was proposed in 2015 or 2016, and was surprised that it wasn't there. It would be an excellent place for people in Columbus to live. I would probably be there right now if it had been approved and was building on the original timeline. There's groceries, there's High Street, there's a park. Wouldn't have to drive anywhere, it'd be awesome. That's, and Columbus doesn't have, it's not shrinking. We need more housing, not less. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Darby. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for Mr. Darby? Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. The next public speaker we have this evening is Tim Maloney, the Executive Director of Clemson Franklin County Metro Parks. Mr. Maloney, the floor is yours.
President Harder, President Harden, members of council. My name is Tim Maloney. I'm the Executive Director of Clemson Franklin County Metro Parks. I come before you tonight to speak about council variance CB 19111, rezoning Z19082, a proposed residential development adjacent to Scioto Autobahn Metro Park. I'd like to start council telling them, in all the history we've ever been able to go through in our 78 years, this is the first time Metro Parks is front of this council in opposition or in support of any zoning or variance. This is very unique for our organization. Back in 2005, this council, with the National Autobahn Society and Metro Parks, entered into a contract to develop that Whittier Peninsula into what was not much more than an eyesore, and today what is considered one of the top urban parks in all of North America. Between our agencies and with full support of the Columbus region, Metro Parks took on the challenge of turning this once polluted site into a regional destination with more than 750,000 visitors every year. This would not have happened without our two agencies working together. Within the city's riverfront vision plan and the brewery district plan, the need for a second bridge was called out for. It was very specific how it was laid out, how to get people in and out of the peninsula. Never was the intention of any type of development or residential or mixed-use to happen without this secondary means of egress. The park was developed, built, and grew over time, knowing this condition. As proposed, this variance in rezoning would unreasonably increase the traffic on Whittier and Mayor to accommodate the approximate 1.5 million new vehicles on what was built as a park road. We also believe this variance in rezoning would additionally impair the safety, health, and comfort to the existing visitors of this park. The developers proposed to Metro Parks their desire to use active parkland for the construction of their road and infrastructure. We're prevented from doing this through the Ohio Revised Code 1545 and cannot, our commissioners cannot in good faith permit a private road to go through active parkland. We're also prevented from this by the recorded deed restrictions placed on us by the city of Columbus when this park was developed. I don't want to paint the picture that we're anti-development. In fact, we're not. One of the resolutions earlier tonight, we've actually worked with the city on making sure there's an easement going through that. We partner with developers, we partner with the city throughout Columbus. The reality of this proposed project is simple. Scioto Autobahn Park, our park, our joint park, has far exceeded anyone's expectations of what this could become. By opening this door and permitting 1.5 million vehicles to bisect a vibrant urban park will not only change the character of that park, but the safety and security. It'll put our 750,000 visitors into a negative situation we will all be held accountable for. Thank you and for this opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Director. So you and I have spent a lot of time together for the past six months.
I, and can I take just a moment? Councilman Dorance is exactly correct. He has been wonderful to work with us on the project, and I will say the same about Jeff and his team. That communication has been open the entire time.
Thank you for that. Is it fair to say, again, the concerns of the Metro Parks fall directly down on that traffic? Absent that issue, many of the other issues or concerns that you have with this development, you probably figure out some type of way to mitigate that impact. Is that fair to say?
Traffic would be the number one. The density factor... The density factor and the use of the facility and, you know, we talked about, Mr. Brown talked about the original plan. Back then, the park was going to be 60 or so acres, a lot more development. But as the park has grown, our infrastructure is built to accommodate that 750 number and a little bit more. It's when you add that whole new residential component, I can tell you the dog park will be undersized overnight. Because if, much like the speaker before, if I lived in there, it'd be really convenient to walk Fido out there.
Yes, and it's a wonderful dog park and it's very nice not to be slopping around in the mud anymore. So good as do you all. So I, you know, as I said earlier, we're going to talk a lot about traffic and I know other council members have lots of questions around this and have, this has been the focus of a lot of our discussions for a while. So you cited that state law doesn't allow you to do this. And I want to read Ohio Revised Code 1545.12. The board may also lease or permit the use of any land for purposes not inconsistent with the purpose for which the lands were acquired and upon the terms the board considers advisable. There's no prohibition within that portion of the revised code and I will read off Board Resolution 6007, May of 2022. Transfer of .413 acres of Franklin County for highway purposes. No renumeration or other consideration identified. Board Resolution 5997, April 2022. Authorization to negotiate easement for underground electrical lines serving a solar farm. Board Resolution 5905, May 2021. .134 easement grant to Ohio Power Company for $3,000. Board Resolution 5880, February of 2021. Grant of lease to Pickaway County Park District for 3.7 acres. Five, Board Resolution 5882, January of 2021. 1.26 sewer easement granted to City Columbus. A Board Resolution 5842, March of 2020. .35 acre grant of waiver for sewer easement to private development consideration. Board Resolution 5843, March 2020. 3.6 acre grant of sewer easement to Grove City. We've, the biggest problem here is that there's the traffic. And consistently, our discussions have been around, there's no way that the parks are going to accommodate this. We've had repeated attempts by the applicant here to solve that problem. So ultimately, the legislation that's in front of this body tonight seems like there's a solution and it seems like the park board in the past has acted on this. So when you look at the plain language of the state law, it doesn't line up with the message that I'm getting from Metro Parks. It doesn't line up with the past actions of the Metro Parks Board. This is, I want to make this project better. When you're talking about the 1.4 million cars coming through, you're hearing the applicant say they don't want that either. They've said repeatedly, they would like to work with you all on it. And I'm just sitting here tonight with that information saying, we've, we've been working for six months on this. This is a great park. This, why haven't we been able to get here on this?
So hearing the resolutions that our board passed, I'm pretty certain most of those are for public use. I heard you mention county engineer, I heard you mention another county.
The point is, talking about the state law allows the flexibility of the park to determine when they're going to grant that easement and when they're not.
And the key line in there, not inconsistent for which the lands were acquired, which we're talking here.
So how is a, how is a highway easement for transportation purposes any different than this?
And widening of, and I don't know which road we're talking about, but widening a road in front of a park, I'll use High Banks as an example, because I know we granted an easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation on that, to avoid traffic backups for people coming in and out of the park. Because when we, the park went north of a million visitors, that's where that came from. So those issues that you're bringing up are for public good. We just granted an easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 7071 project, hence the reason the dog park moved to the south. Our easements are granted for public good. We worked with Mr. Brown early on about that road becoming a public road and that wasn't an option at the time.
Okay, but you acknowledged in the past, you have provided easements to other entities.
Absolutely.
Okay. And you just understand from our perspective, looking at this, when the Metro Parks have said repeatedly, your hands are tied here, there's nothing to do. And then when I hear an applicant say, I want to make this better, I want to avoid, if the Metro Parks are saying this is our chief concern and there's a way for us to make this better, as a body, we're always looking for ways to find a solution. I've worked with you for six months to try and find a solution here. And when I look at that information, it becomes very difficult to see why we can't find a solution on this. Well, with that, I will allow other council members to ask questions. Councilmember Rosa Deputio.
Hi, we haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, so I have a question, just in terms of precedent. And you started by saying, we've had a good partnership and think about the other Metro Parks. Can you talk to us a little bit about quarry, quarry, that's a very difficult word when you're bilingual, my tongue does not move that way. Quarry trails, where there is, I mean, to get into the park, you're literally going through a residential area to get into that park. I'm just wondering, how does that compare to Metro Parks? Because, or I'm sorry, to the Audubon? Because in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, if we flipped this, right? Like if we had a housing development and we were like, there's not enough green space, let's build a park, everyone would want to build a park, right? But when we flip it and there is a park and we're building residential, it always feels a little different. So I'm just wondering, since we have this precedence already, how do you square the difference between one and the other? I'm just interested in understanding.
Quarry Trails is a great example. So Quarry Trails was property not owned by that developer, not owned by Metro Parks and not owned by, it was owned by a private individual. The developer and Metro Parks partnered in the acquisition of that land with a significantly large donation by the developer to Metro Parks of additional land for greenways trails along the river. The private developer is also responsible for building the signalized intersection at Trabee Road, as well as the entire intersection on Old Dublin Road. They're responsible for the construction of the three entrances to that park where this park has one entrance. So when Councilman Dorans was talking about volume of traffic, that's divided among three instead of among one. That takes me back to my earlier point about the original downtown riverfront plan and brewery district plan. The second means of egress is critical, in our opinion, to keeping people safe and moving through that park in a proper way.
But it does feel like the spirit of some of those same changes in terms of traffic. I mean, I understand what you're saying about the, the entrances into the park, but.
The ownership didn't exist prior to the Quarry Trails relationship developing, where this partnership started between the city of Columbus, National Audubon Society and Metro Parks.
And have you seen challenges getting into the park or challenges because of the residents in that area?
At Quarry Trails, no residents are living there yet, so we haven't seen.
So we haven't seen it yet.
Have not seen it.
What could happen? We're not sure.
Yep, we could.
Okay.
Other council members? President Pro Tem Brown.
So in comparing those, you were talking about how this one, it feels like that second means of egress would be key. So I'm, I don't mean to go back to Councilmember Doran's point, but it feels like there was a way to work with accomplishing the second, to actually get that second means of egress. So I'm wondering why that, if that's what was key to making it work, why you didn't want to pursue that second means of egress?
And I'm going off memory here. One of the key considerations was Mayor Place was always in play. There was never a consideration to take residential traffic off of Whittier and Mare to get into the site. The secondary access where they wanted to go through the dog park was always a, it was an encouraged or a select entrance to the park. But all the traffic still has to come across the one bridge.
Okay.
Well, this council's all about process. And when we look at this process, and I've looked at it over the last six months and then previously through, through 2019, the process has been solid. From the late 90s, when they announced the bond package to actually, that included purchasing this and making it a joint venture, to when the park was announced, it was always intended to be a multi-use park. And that included residential, according to the things that I read. So now we have somebody that's come along and they've proposed a really good project and at about 6,000 square feet is the difference between making this amenable so that we do not have to have traffic running on a public street through that park. And you solely stand in the way of that. Your board hasn't heard, hasn't weighed in on it? I spent 45 minutes with the board chair yesterday, talking to the board chair about this. You've not asked them to vote on this. You're solely making this as an administrator, you're making this decision as an administrator, and you're holding up good policy work. Our priorities are affordable housing and providing housing for the citizens of the, the residents of the city of Columbus. The tax benefits alone are significant to, to what we are trying to accomplish here in this city. And so 6,000 square feet, this applicant has agreed to, they'll build you three times the size of the dog park in another place on that property. They've agreed to provide other property outside of the park in lieu of the 6,000 square feet that you give up, so there's a two-lane road that goes along that easement. And so I ask you, how are you administratively standing in the way of this, not even bringing this to your board and holding this whole thing up? And then getting on social media, making it sound like this is city council and the developer pushing it down your throat? That is not the case.
To answer the first part of your question, I work for the Board of Park Commissioners. Our Board of Park Commissioners is very aware of the district's position on this. They have not taken a vote. The board has given me general direction through every step of this process. So the conversations you had, I don't disagree with, but our board has been very clear in their direction they've given to me on this. At the end of the day, my job as the Executive Director of Metro Parks is to not only protect and conserve the open spaces, but to create these spaces for our visitors to come and enjoy the parks. That's my sole job, working for this district.
So clearly you put us in a position where we, in order for this application to go through, we have to make, we are the ones that are going to decide whether this traffic goes down the middle of the park, because you will not allow for a 6,000 square foot easement. That's, that's the position. It's your choice, not ours, to do that. Because again, our goals are affordable housing and providing more housing for our residents. And so you stand in the way of that two-lane road going on that easement, just to be clear.
Yeah, the last thing I want to be is argumentative in front of this council. The 6,000 square foot easement you're speaking of would run immediately adjacent to a dog park with hundreds of cars in it every day, dozens of dogs running. It's not a good shared use for a volume of traffic that's at 4,700 cars per day.
And again, like I said, the applicant would build you a three times the dog park in another location in that park.
Thank you, Councilmember Reemy. I have a question there. Councilmember Banks, I know you have a question.
I'm not sure who this question is appropriate for around the traffic piece. So I don't know if that's staff or developer, but that 1.5 million vehicle number that keeps getting thrown out, I just want to clarify that for folks that that's trips, not actual physical 1.5 million cars that will be added. So I just want to make sure that that's cleared up. So I don't know who can.
We'll, we'll get to that with staff, but we're going to allow any additional questions with Executive Director Maloney and then we'll get to that. Councilmember Favor.
Yes, thank you for being present here today. You, you made a statement in response to Councilmember Doran's reading of the resolutions that all of those decisions, to your recollection, were made in, in honor of public good. And I, I think I'm struggling with why this would not be deemed a public good as well, in your opinion.
It would be, the easement that was requested is for a private road to access a private housing development. The other easements we're talking about are public road right-of-way. I believe there's a solar project involved in one of the resolutions you read. These are serving the greater good of the community, not just the residents of that facility.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
President Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you. And again, I really appreciate you being here. I think that also part of what you hear my colleagues also talking about is this notion that housing is infrastructure, right? And I understand that like roads and sewers are the classic definition of infrastructure, but we are in this position now in the city of Columbus where there, you know, prices go up when there are not enough, when there's not enough product. And so we have to, we have to think about all the different ways that we promote housing in the city, as Councilmember Favor does all the time. And I think the notion of housing as infrastructure has kind of taken too long to, to cement into our minds and that is the real principle that you're hearing echoed from my colleagues. And, and that's why we are in search of solutions, if you will. The one question I wanted to ask about the, the, I love the park, love the park, go there with my kids all the time, one of the best playgrounds, rock climbing. My daughter probably likes a little too much. But I am, the parcel in question is just a brownfield right now, right? So it's not, it's not actually, it's not, I just want to be clear that we're not subtracting any usable park area.
It's behind fence.
Right, right. So it's, it's not, you mentioned something about sort of splitting a park in two, and I don't think that's exactly what this parcel would be doing. It's not currently in use as a park. And I have a bad time remembering aerials all the time, but I don't think it splits the park in two. It's way over onto the one side.
Development absolutely is on the far eastern edge. Probably my comments referred to the park road or Mayor Place that bisects the park.
Okay, but that's what you said, the, the road bisects the park. I just wanted to be clear that the parcel is not bisecting the park.
I, so I think that's where I struggle, because, you know, to, just to go off of where Councilmember President Pro Tem Brown was at, you know, I see public good as solving a lot of different issues, right? We do have this housing crisis, which is very much real right now, right? And it's only going to be exasperated by big projects like Intel coming to central Ohio. But I'm also thinking about how difficult it is to remediate environmental issues like this brownfield, right? There is no plan to, to take care of this eyesore of a site. And so if we get beyond just this singular conversation that we're having right here with this one road, I think about the greater good, the public good of providing housing. We are, we are tasked right now with trying to find and have enough housing for the residents that currently live in the city of Columbus. And we know that they were falling short, right? And so I'm not saying that this is going to be the end-all cure to what we need in the city of Columbus, but it is absolutely a solution, which to me is part of a public good that will be provided. And then to tack on the fact that we're not going to be providing an abatement here tonight seems like an opportunity to celebrate, right? And, and we're also going to get some affordable housing out of this deal. So for me, this is checking all of the boxes around public good. So I appreciate President Pro Tem really expanding upon that, but that's where I'm really struggling with. It wasn't just a singular conversation with just road access. And I understand that is incredibly important, but I am looking at the larger issue here where we've got people living in tents and that just cannot be in the city of Columbus, right? We have a big problem we have to solve here. But I appreciate you being present tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Maloney? So I will finish with this and it will be the same question that I asked Mr. Brown. If in fact this moves forward, I just want to ask the Metro Parks and feel free to answer or not answer at this point, but it has been my goal to, for folks to continue to work together on this. As we talked about the departments, this is not the end, if in fact this passes. This is part of the process. And I would just ask of you and the Metro Parks, if in fact this does go through, to stay engaged. Because again, I think there is a solution on this, on the table that helps to alleviate the main concerns that had been articulated to me for months. So I would just ask you that question. Again, feel free to answer or not.
I'll answer quicker than Mr. Brown. Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. The next public speaker we have here with us this evening is. Leanne, sorry about that. Lost you on my notes.
What did we see?
Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, President Harden and council members. I'm here on behalf of the Birds. My name is Leanne Miller. I am the Director of the Audubon, the Grange Insurance Audubon Center located within the Sayodah Audubon Metro Park and one of its partners. I am employed by the National Audubon Society. The park was indeed created by the city, the Metro Parks and National Audubon. It is a place for all, for people of all backgrounds to come to the park to enjoy nature. It is known as an urban oasis that is an excellent example of urban and ecology restoration. It went from a brownfield, an auto impound lot, to something beautiful, to wetlands. It went from a brownfield, an auto impound lot, to something beautiful, to wetlands, to trails, native habitat, and a wonderful center that focuses on environmental education. We do so with our Columbus City Schools. It is a wonderful balance of recreation and conservation for those who visit. The mission of Audubon is to protect the birds and the places they live, and we were there to establish and protect and preserve the Riparian Corridor and the Mississippi Flyway. More than 325 bird species make their way round trip each year through that flyway. Like you, when you're on a trip, you like to stop, get a drink, take a rest. Birds are no different. They need a place to refuel, to move on, all the way down to South America. Grange Insurance Audubon Center and the Sayota Audubon Park is an important bird area. It is a stopover both for spring and fall migration. We provide critical habitats for those migration periods. Structures have an adverse effect on migration. Picture, if you will, a river of flowing water. Migration is no different. Birds are flying in, birds are flying out. A structure becomes that dam. Hundreds of birds die daily because of a collision. I believe that we have a way to bring Audubon in. I believe we have a way to set a precedent. We work together for the sustainability of Columbus. It's really important. We are part of Green Spot. We understand the goals and what you're trying to achieve, and we hope to be, that we are a good partner in that. We ask that we use this park and this opportunity to make sure that we have bird-friendly windows. We look at lighting. We look at the habitat around these areas. Together, we should look like it's been there for years. Audubon has been there, the building has been there for 13 years. We are reducing collisions. We are making an impact, and if we are all going to be in this area, we need to make sure that we are protecting the birds, the natural habitat, and for what's to come for our future. I ask you and the developer to bring us to the table and make sure that we're a part of the process to make sure we're making a bird-friendly habitat. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Thank you again.
Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller, thank you for being here, and we will be calling the applicant back up here in a minute, and that will be one of the public commitments I will ask them to make. Councilmember Banksenow, you had a question for staff. Would you like to ask that now?
Thank you, Councilmember Doran. My question was really just more to clarify that traffic count number, that number that we keep hearing, 1.5 million, 4,700 per day or whatever that is, but just to clarify for the public and for folks what that number means and what that traffic count means.
Yes, so that count would be the trips in and out of the development, so over the course of an entire year, it would be approximately 1.5 million trips in and out.
Correct. Not actual vehicles, but trips.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before bringing the applicant back? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, I just have one question for you, and I'll see if other members have. So, Ms. Miller just asked for a very direct commitment from you to work with the Audubon Center on design mechanisms to avoid, you know, additional impact on wildlife. You're here, would like to hear a public commitment that you're willing to include them at the table to make sure that that happens, working with the Brewery District Architectural Review Commission to make sure that those things are added, and we've got experts in the community who know about that right there. So, just asking for a public commitment that that'll happen tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Ream?
I know in the text it limits to 200 feet, but I believe there's a commitment on the number of stories that these buildings will be.
Yeah, I probably should have changed that. That was when we had the large tower, which Tim objected to, the height, he just thought that was out of character. But no, we've got seven-story buildings, five of which will be residential, two of which will be structured parking. And the nice thing about the issue with the windows, because of this process with the Brewery District being an Architectural Review Commission, we will have to go back to them with the design. And I was just talking to our architect, MBBJ, they're dealing with this issue in a building in DC. So, we are going to have internal staff that will know what's going on and be able to do best practices to address that issue. And we have a process with the Architectural Review to go through that and make those commitments.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other questions? Council President Harden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brown, could you restate the affordable housing commitment? I think that that has weighed on a lot of us in terms of how we see this project and how we view our role in terms of considering these different issues.
As staff has pointed out, this property is not currently subject to a CRA. So, what we did, we put it in the zoning text, both in the zoning and the council variance, that 10% of the units will be 80% AMI for a period of 10 years. That's the current proposal. And, you know, if something would happen and the city would look at doing something else, and we, you know, we would reconsider and look at increasing that percentage in terms of whatever the city's policy would be going forward in the future. But right now, with no benefits, we're doing 10%.
Does anybody know what 10%, what 80% AMI is for community?
Council President for a family of four, it's $74,950. That's for a family of four.
$50,000 per...
$74,000 for a family of four.
And 10% of your units, so 75 units would be set aside for...
About 78, the project when we're done.
And that's at, and that is including with no abatement coming from this council. I cannot stress that enough.
Correct, correct.
We are only getting affordable housing included in projects of this size in the city of Columbus through our current CRA policy. And this project is not, would not be a part of that incentive policy, which would include an abatement.
Correct.
You're doing this at your own will, and you're even stating tonight that should the city of Columbus, as we currently are updating our CRA policy at this point in time, that your company is willing to consider those revisions as we continue to grow in this city.
He's the chair. Sorry.
Councilmember Ream?
Quick question on that point, and are you committing also to follow the mix? So, in other words, you're not going to have 78 studio apartments at 80% AMI. You'll follow the mix if to match?
Whatever, it says 10%. I mean, we will follow whatever your requirements are in terms of the distribution and everything.
Chair.
Thank you.
May I just close my point? So, we talk about the park being open and accessible. When I think about 75, 78 units at 80% AMI, and I think about the neighborhood in which this park serves and the community that it serves, I don't know, in my mind, where within a mile or two that you would find 75 other units of affordability like that, close to a park, this park or any park this nice. And so, I think that it is worth zeroing in on specifically what we're talking about here. And I'll leave it at that. No, I won't. I will say that some of the social media that I saw over the weekend painted this so off, so far off-base in terms of what this project actually was and who it actually serves. And a lot of the folks that I saw got riled up about this issue are the exact same folks who come down here and argue and fight back and push back on this council around incentivizing developers to put in affordable housing. And we do that, we have to do it because of the lack of supply that we have in this community. And so, I am just saying, in a general point, this is not a question, that it was more than frustrating this week when I realized all was at the table. And also, because the chair was not the only person that had several conversations with Metro Parks, and the opportunities to be a better partner in finding a solution laid themselves bare several times, and they were not, they did not meet that partnership threshold that we like to see in our city. So, I just wanted to make that point. It was not so much a question, but out of frustration. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Harden. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Brown or staff at this point? CNN, thank you, Jeff. Just to conclude this discussion, you know, when I took over the zoning committee in January of this year, you know, I made a commitment to my colleagues here on council on the community that we would work in good faith with all parties on every single zoning application to find more common ground to make projects better. As I've said repeatedly, we've worked for over six months just at council between the applicant and the Metro Parks to find some type of solution to this. I love parks. I love this park in particular. This is where I normally launch my kayak out of. Prior to joining council, I served in the city of Columbus Wreck and Parks Commission. Anyone knows me personally, I spend as much of my time as possible out in the outdoors. Love taking my little son hiking as much as I can, many times in Metro Park facilities. Normally rezoning an application that has unanimous support from city staff, from development commission, from the local neighborhood group will go on the agenda quickly and be passed unanimously by council. There's a reason that we waited six months to be here tonight, it's because we've been trying to find that common ground. I know, I'm intimately aware of the traffic concerns that we've talked about here tonight that are associated with the development. I really believe there is a pathway forward to address those concerns, and as I've asked all the applicants, all the parties here tonight, to continue to sit down, to find a solution to make this better. All that said, this project meets five out of the nine city council zoning priorities that we articulated around the environment, around housing, around public investment or private investment infrastructure. This is a brownfield, a toxic property that is adding nothing in its current state. The Brewery District Plan going back 30 years calls for housing on this site. The proposal in front of us accomplishes that by adding dense housing near the Job Center of Downtown. As we've talked about, the 10% of units being set aside for those at 80% of air income. The applicant has committed $1 million for infrastructure for park improvements requested by the city or the parks. This isn't, as Council President talked about, this is not a choice between adding housing and preserving green space. We can do both, and the expectation from me and this council is that that happens. So with that, at this point, I'd like to move to take this legislation from the table.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Removed.
I'd like to amend as submitted to clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we move into the council variance portion of the zoning agenda. First, we have council variance 1804-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.037, R2F Residential District 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.05, area district lot with requirements, 3332.14, R2F area district requirements, 3332.18D, basis of computing area, 3332.19, fronting, 3332.21D, building property lines, 3332.25, maximum side yard required, and 3332.27 rear yard for the property located at 471 South 22nd Street to permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is Horace and Rob Development LTD, care of Dave Perry agent. The proposed use is a two-unit dwelling on one lot. The city's department recommendation is approval. Near East Commission recommendation is approval, 601. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the finding of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1829-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.037, R2F Residential District 3312.25, maneuvering, 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, 3332.14, R2F Area District 3332.19, fronting, 3332.21F, building lines, 3332.26, minimum yards, minimum yard side permitted, 3332.27 rear yard for the property located at 1305 City Park Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling on a lot with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is 1305 City Park LTD, care of Jackson B. Reynolds attorney. Proposed use is a two-unit dwelling on one lot. City's department recommendation is approval. The Columbus South Side Area Commission recommendation is approval, 110. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the finding of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1832-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3356.03. C4 permitted use of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 843 Sullivan Avenue to permit a two-unit single dwelling in the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Blue Chip Homes, QOZBLLC, Dave Perry agent. Proposed use is a two-unit, two-single-unit dwelling. City's department recommendation is approval. The Franklin Area Commission recommendation is approval, 110. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1833-2022 to grant a variance provisions of section 3356.03. C4 permitted use of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 899 Sullivan Avenue to permit a two-unit dwelling in C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Blue Chip Homes, QOZBLLC, care of Dave Perry agent. Proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. City's department recommendation is approval. Franklin Area Commission recommendation is approval, 110. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Three, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have variance 1860-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3371.01, P1 Parking District of the Columbus City Codes. For the property located at 25 North Wayne Avenue to conforming an existing single-unit dwelling in the P1 Private Parking District. The applicant is Steven Brier, care of Daniel Kessler, agent. Proposed use is to conform an existing single-unit dwelling. City's department recommendation is approval. The Greater Hilltop Area Commission recommendation is approval, 130. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1862-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3356.03. C4 permitted uses in 335611A2. C4 district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes. The property located at 1299 Sullivan Avenue to conform an existing single-unit dwelling with a reduced building line in C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Umpire LLC, care of Shuniqua Chapman, agent. Proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. City's department recommendation is approval. Franklin Area Commission recommendation is approval, 110. First, I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1895-2022 to granted variance provisions of section 3312.27, parking setback lines, 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required, and 3333.18B building lines of Columbus City Codes. The property located at 840 Michigan Avenue to permit reduced development standards for apartment building in the AR3 Residential District and to repeal ordinance number 0612-2021, passed March 29th of 2021. The applicant is JDS Companies, care of Michael Shannon attorney. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. City's department recommendation is approval. The Harrison Society's recommendation is approval, 10 to 1. I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's, favor, Ream, President Harden.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 1908-2022 to granted variance from provisions of section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3312.49, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.05A4 arena lot with requirements, 3332.19, fronting on a public street, 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes, the property located at 761 Franklin Avenue to permit a two, two-single unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Nicholas Kenny. The proposed use is two single-unit dwellings on one parcel. City's department recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission recommendation is approval for two. I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of...
Accept it. Go ahead, keep looking, sorry.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Finally, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have variance 0290-2022 to grant a, a variance provisions of section 3356.03, C4 permitted uses, 3361.02 permitted uses, and 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes, the property located at 142 West Whittier Street to permit ground use, floor residential uses, and reduced parking in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. This is companion council variance to the rezoning we heard earlier tonight, numbers 0289-2022. The applicant is Zimmer Development Company LLC, care of Jeff Brown attorney, proposed use of the ground floor residential uses. City Department recommendation is approval. Brewery District Commission recommendation is approval, 6-0. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to take from the table.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Removed.
Thank you. I move to accept the entire staff report and do evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Accept it.
I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
I now amend as submitted to clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Doran's favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Amended.
Finally, I move for passage.